We'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you would take roll call.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Combs? Mr. Luther?
President.
Ms. Nelson?
Present.
Ms. Reclu?
Present.
Ms. Sabacher?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Present.
Mr. Washington?
Here.
Mr. West?
Here.
Eight council members present.
And Pastor Williamson is here to do our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Let's pray together. Our Heavenly Father, on such a beautiful day as this, we give you thanks for our transition time within the governance of our city. We're grateful, Lord, for those that have served faithfully, and for our newly-elected servants that will continue the forward motion of our community as we continue to prosper and grow together. With that thanks being given, Lord, it behooves us all to pause for just a moment and to remember the repetitive violence that encroaches our nation at every corner. We remember the victims, Lord, tonight in Kentucky, in Louisville. We pray for those, Lord, still struggling to live, for those that are deceased, for the officers that were hurt seriously, critically, and for the work that's being done to bring their families aid and comfort. And, Lord, much closer to home, we've had violent crimes the last 24 hours in both Cole County, Jeff, and Boone County, Columbia, resulting, Lord, in real human suffering and loss. Our prayer is, Lord, that you'll intervene on behalf of a very troubled nation and enter the affairs and the lives of men, and please help us bring this repetitive violence and the hurt to innocent people to a close. Lord, I pray for our law enforcement officers and firefighters and first responders, and for the overwhelming task that they're bearing on behalf of we, the people. I pray for your continued presence on medical teams and trauma surgeons and all those that are valiantly serving to protect human life and the communities across America. We're grateful, Lord, for this session tonight and for many from the community that have come to support this transition. I'm thankful, I'm thankful, Lord, always, for Mayor Cannel's service to this community, and for Mr. West's service to us all. He was my councilman, and I'm grateful, Lord, for our new mayor, Myers, and, Lord, for our new councilman, Mr. Hinchey. I pray they do well in wisdom and in service as they serve we, the people. Bless this session tonight, though it be celebratory in many ways. Bless all business that will be done and decisions that are made, that they be pleasing to you, and please take care of our city family. Any bereavement, any sickness or affliction, any trial, we just submit to you, Lord, for we know that you are absolutely able to take care of the affairs of men. Bless us all as we work together to further our community and be a good example for others. We pray this in Christ our Lord. Amen. Face the flags. Attention, salute, and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Proud of you, sir.
All righty, before we move into our agenda tonight, I would just say that this is a special meeting, and it'll be done a little bit differently. We'll work through just a couple of items that are kind of wrapping up my tenure and Mike's tenure, and then we'll close the session and restart a new session for our incoming mayor and council. With that, our next item up is approval of consent agenda. Council members may choose to remove an item for discussion prior to approving the agenda, and tonight we have three items. The approval of city council meeting minutes for February 28th, March 14th, and March 28th of 2023. And I would entertain a motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on those? Okay. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? All righty, moving on with resolutions. Tonight, we have Resolution 3483 certifying our vote cast, and Councilwoman Reclu has been chosen to present this, please.
Resolution number 3483, certification of voters. Start again. Resolution number 3483, certification of votes cast. A resolution certifying the votes cast in the municipal election held on April 4, 2023. Certified results will be a handout at the meeting. Do I make a motion that we accept Resolution number 3483 at tonight's meeting?
Second. Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? And all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? All righty, and moving on to ordinances. We do have a second read tonight, and presenting that is Councilman Washington. If you would, present 1675.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Bill number 1675, rezoning of King Carter Boulevard, Lot 9. An ordinance reclassifying, under the zoning code, a tract of land in Lot 9 located at 2011 King Carter Boulevard in Fulton, Missouri, and establish an effective date. I make a motion that we have moved this to the next scheduled council meeting.
Second. Very good. We have a motion and a second, and do we need to wrap this up tonight?
Mr. Mayor, yes, thank you. It's the city clerk. I appreciate that. I was gonna say the same thing. Thank you.
Yeah, so if we could amend that motion to read that for the third time tonight.
Yes, please and thank you.
Thank you. Bill number 1675, rezoning of King Carter Boulevard, Lot 9. An ordinance reclassifying, under the zoning code, a tract of land in Lot 9 located at 2011 King Carter Boulevard in Fulton, Missouri, and establish an effective date. I make a motion that we pass Bill number 1675 at tonight's council meeting.
Very good. So we have a motion and a second. This is gonna be for the second read, I think, to do it procedurally, correct?
That'll work, yes.
Okay, we'll do this, and we'll do it one more time after we vote on it this time, so, all right.
Amen. Bill number 1675.
Hang on, Bob. Yeah, we need to vote on it, and then we'll move on to third. So, is there any discussion on this? We did discuss this at our last meeting. There was no controversy, I don't believe, so, yeah. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? And if you would, again, please.
Bill number 1675, rezoning of King Carter Boulevard, Lot 9. An ordinance reclassifying, under the zoning code, a tract of land in Lot 9 located at 2011 King Boulevard, King Carter Boulevard in Fulton, Missouri, and establish effective, and establish effective date. I make a motion that we pass for tonight's meeting, at the council's meeting tonight.
Second. Very good. You've all, we do have a motion and a second, and I'll call for that question. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? You've all heard the bill read three times. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you would take roll call for final vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Luther?
Yes.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Sabacher?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
With eight affirmative votes.
Very good. And we're moving right through this. We're about to recess this council, and then in order to drag this out a little bit further, I do have a couple of things I want to say. It's been a wonderful four years for me. Before, I just have a few people to thank. First off, I want to thank my council, both past and present, and the past mayors that I've been fortunate to work with. We've been through some difficult things together, and that's sort of our job. But you, men and women, show up every other Tuesday and put yourself in the crosshairs, right along with me, and I appreciate that, and I wish you nothing but the best. To our city department heads as a leadership team, and I talked to them yesterday, but, but I just, I wanted to say again that you guys are tasked with taking the vision of the mayor, the citizens, and the council, and turning that into a reality. And that's done with creativity, ingenuity, and hard work. We can't always do the things that we want to do, the way we want to, you know, the way a Fortune 500 company would do them, but we make the best of what we have, and you always do great at working, working with what you have to work with, and doing, doing the people's work that way. To our other amazing staff, you show up every day to face the public and do the work of the people. Some of my favorite days have been those where I've seen firsthand the hard work that goes into running the city. It seems like the occasional failures, failures and mishaps never go unnoticed, especially now with social media, but the good things and the great things that happen every day that go on, they, they don't get so much as an attaboy. So I say a heartfelt thank you to our staff, and keep up the good work. To all of our other city leaders and community leaders, both in the county, the chamber, our schools, and our businesses, I want to thank them for always making me feel welcome and that I belong here. This is a revolving seat, and I'm sure Mayor Myers will be just as welcomed, but it's not really required of these folks to, to be the way they are. They do the way, they do it because they love their community, and I thank them for that. To my family, my son Dylan, he's here along with my brother Craig, and my biggest supporter from day one, and my cousin Dick Davis, he's here too, he showed up. But my biggest supporter from day one, my Aunt Carol Taylor. Appreciate her being by my side through this. There's just also a few others that I want to mention that aren't here, but were a big part of my journey, and I know they're proud. My mom and dad, of course, my other brother Bud, Dylan's mom Crystal and her family, they were always right there to support me as well, and that will always mean a lot to me. Billy, Diane, Cory, Emily, and the girls. And I want to thank both of my other bosses who put up with me doing this job while I was missing in action throughout a lot of the days and events that I had to be at and be gone from my work. They were very patient with me, and I still got a paycheck, thank God. But that was Kingdom Care Senior Living and Marcellus Cronk with Elite Real Properties. So appreciate those guys. Lastly, I want to thank all my friends, including the class of 87? Right, right on. We always root for each other, and I appreciate their support. Also, my best friend Sherry in Kentucky, who gets to hear all about my good days and my not-so-good days here at City Hall. Thank you. When you're in small-town politics, everything we do is judged, it seems, rightfully so, but it makes it a situation where it's not just me up here, but it's all those people that are in my life as well. So thank you for your patience with me during this time and this adventure, and for supporting me through thick and thin, and I'll miss, miss being here, but thank you all. Thank you all very much. At this time, we'll close this session, and we'll move on to our newly-elected officials. My last gavel.
All right, if I can have Mayor Myers up here with me? That'd be you. I'll have you stand on that blue mark on the floor. Those are for you anyhow. All right. This is new for both of us. We were outside with those Bradford pear trees. They're wonderful. All right, if you'll please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Steve Myers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications.
That I possess all the qualifications.
Prescribed for the office of mayor by law.
For the office of mayor by law.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Missouri.
The Constitution of the State of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws.
The provisions of all laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
Affecting charter cities.
Of affecting charter cities.
And the ordinances of the city.
And the ordinances of the city.
Of the city of Fulton, Missouri.
Of the city of Fulton, Missouri.
And that I will faithfully conduct myself.
And I will faithfully conduct myself.
In the office to which I am elected.
In the office of which I am elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Well, first off, I, and I guess I can talk now. This wasn't part of the program that I thought. I want to thank everybody for your support throughout this whole, whole campaign, and certainly tonight, a lot of my supporters are here, and I really appreciate that. I wish we could pack this council chamber every council meeting, because it's so important to have the, the people here to see what actually we do here. And I'm really grateful for everything that you all have done for me, and not only for this campaign, but over the last 21 years, I guess, as police chief as well. I'm really proud of these two guys down on the end. I think I hired both of them, and they both turned out to be outstanding police officers, and I appreciate them and their support. That being said, I'm gonna turn it back over to you. Thank you very much. My wife is here tonight. Carolyn, I love you to death. We talked a week or so ago. I could, I could go around and name all of you, but I guess time is getting cut short here, so I'll turn it back over to you.
Perfect, if you'll stay here with me.
All right.
And we'll give out our commission cards when we're finished. If I could have the council members who were elected during this election, please join me. Mr. Hinchey, I'll have you stand on the blue spot, and everybody to his left. Correct. All right. If you'll raise your right hand, I'm gonna swear you all in at the same time. I state your name.
I, Carolyn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications.
That I possess all the qualifications.
Prescribed for office of council member by law.
Prescribed for office of council member by law.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Missouri.
The Constitution of the State of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws.
The provisions of all laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
Affecting charter cities.
Affecting charter cities.
And the ordinances of the city of Fulton, Missouri.
And the ordinances of the city of Fulton, Missouri.
And that I will faithfully conduct myself.
And I will faithfully conduct myself.
In the office to which I was elected.
In the office to which I was elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Wonderful. Congratulations. And you can take your seat, if you will. Thank you. All right, we have one more very special swearing-in that we're really all excited about. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Carolyn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications.
That I possess all the qualifications.
Prescribed for the office of city prosecuting attorney by law.
Prescribed for the office of the city prosecuting attorney by law.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Missouri.
The Constitution of the State of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws.
The provisions of all laws.
Of this state affecting charter cities.
Of this state affecting charter cities.
And the ordinances of the city of Fulton, Missouri.
And the ordinances of the city of Fulton.
And that I will faithfully conduct myself.
I will faithfully conduct myself.
In the office to which I was elected.
In the office to which I was elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard.
Okay, I want to call the meeting to order again. Madam Clerk, if you'd call roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Combs? Mr. Hinchey? Mr. Luther? Ms. Nelson? Ms. Reclu? Ms. Sabacher? Mr. Stone?
Present.
Mr. Washington? Eight council members present.
Very good. At this time, we'll take comments from visitors. I think you'll have three minutes. You can come to the podium and give us your name and your address. Seeing none, we'll move on. At this time, we'll adopt the council rules of order and procedure. I think you've all, they're basically Robert's rules with a few exceptions, one exception, I think. We may move, if, if you all choose to, we can move to add the director's report with the consent agenda. I know that was asked, I think, January to remove that. I personally don't see a reason why we need to remove it. We can remove it at any time if we want to, so it's up to you all what you want to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I'd prefer that the Director of Administration's report remains separate from the consent agenda. It allows us to have discussion.
If I can interrupt, please, if we can make a motion to put this up for discussion? Would anybody like to make a motion?
Do we have a second? Did you make that a motion?
If we're keeping the same rules that we had 10 minutes ago, we don't need to make a motion, right?
Well, this is a new council, yes.
Okay. Then I make a motion to allow for discussion of the adoption of council rules of order and procedures?
Thank you, Mr. Stone.
Okay, we have a motion second for that. Does, do we have a discussion on that?
Yes, all in favor, please.
Seeing no discussion, all in favor of keeping what we have, and those rule, the director's report will be out of, separate the way it was last meeting, basically. What?
Right, at this point, it's just discussion, and then we'll make a motion whether we're going to adopt it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries? So, Jeff, you want to?
Just, the discussion is.
Why you want to do that?
I'd prefer that the Director of Administration report remains separate from the consent agenda. Anything on the consent agenda, the council is not allowed to discuss it verbally and out loud. By keeping it separate, we're able to discuss any items, questions, speak to department directors or to the Director of Administration.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, do we have a motion then to accept the?
Yes.
I move to adopt the current council rules of order and procedures.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second. Does anyone want to discuss that? Seeing none, all in favor of keeping basically what we have now, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Very good. Now we move to the election of the deputy mayor. I'll open it for.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion on the floor for deputy mayor, Valerie Sebacher. Do we have any other nomination?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Jeff Stone for the mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Washington, but I respectfully decline the nomination.
Do we have any other nominations? I'm sorry, Councilman Washington, your nomination, I guess, failed because we didn't get a second on that. Do we have any other nominations? Seeing none? Do I have a motion to nomination cease?
Cease all nominations for deputy mayor?
Second? Your second? Mayor, okay. All right, we have, she's already smiled. We have a motion on the floor to elect Valerie Sebacher to the position of deputy mayor. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Did you get that, Kathy?
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay. Why don't we do a roll call on that, please?
Sure. Mr. Henchy. Mr. Luther.
Yes.
Ms. Nelson.
Yes.
Ms. Reclu.
Yes.
Ms. Sebacher. Mr. Stone.
Yes.
Mr. Washington. And Mr. Combs. Seven council members affirmative, one opposed.
Thank you. Next, we'll move along to the approval of the consent agenda, which we have done tonight. And there's been nothing taken off. We'll move on to new business. And that is the closing of Court Street from, where, Second to. I'm reading it. On Saturday the 13th, section, just the, just the second. And the Rotary Club is requesting that. And I'll give you the floor.
What an honor to be here for your first meeting, Mr. Mayor. I am here on behalf of Fulton Rotary Club, and we just celebrated 100 years of service here in Fulton. And as part of that celebration, we're wanting to raise some funds to produce more therapy dogs that can be used in our county courthouse for children who have been abused, sexually molested, or anything of that nature. We've partnered with Canines on the Front Line, who also serve veterans, and Therapy Paws, which will handle the dogs working in the courtrooms. We are producing a poker run that's involving five different cities and their Rotary Clubs, with all the proceeds coming back here into Fulton to be able to help these nonprofits that we believe have a great mission. And in order to be safe, we've asked county commissioners if we could use the parking lot in front of the new courthouse for a car show. We'll have cars, Jeeps, and motorcycles. And if we close half of that block from the back end of the courthouse down to Second, and we will have the party at Ohana's, so there won't be a need to have liquor outside. But we can have a safe way for our pedestrians to cross that street for about two to three hours on May 13th.
Okay. And I, I see where, Chief Ladwig, you're aware of this? And our Street Department? And Chief Kofeld, are you aware of this as well? Okay. All right, you all have heard the request, I have a motion.
Move to ex.
Very good, do we have any discussion? We have a first and second.
Your name, please.
I am Stephanie Volmer, and I am President-elect for Fulton Rotary Club.
Thank you.
Seeing no discussion, all in favor of closing the street for the Rotary Club? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? You're good.
Thank you.
We did have one change, a slight change in the agenda. We're switching, if you're looking at an agenda, we're switching B down to C and C up to where B is. And we have two, two requests for street closures, and we're going to get those out of the day, away, and then we're going to turn it over to Mr. Swin. The, he's requesting. On the Bricks, the On the Bricks event. Liz, oh yeah, there she is. Come forward, and they're requesting Court Street from Sixth to Seventh.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Congratulations to everyone. I'm back again this year asking for your permission approval. We had a great time last year with prom 2022, and we want to make prom 2023 even better. I'm just asking for a little road closure right in front of the playhouse, so the kids can do their promenade here on the bricks, just like we did before, and keep it going.
Okay. And I see that Chief Ladwig is aware of this, and our Street Department, and Chief Kofeld, and are you, because I know that's kind of a situation up there for you all. Chief, you have something to add?
Bill Ladwig, Police Chief, this is a tremendous opportunity for the kids to have prom here in town, and we are delighted to be able to offer any assistance we can to make sure it's safe and a great event for them. So we have no issues with this.
What, what police assistance are they going to need?
Just with the barricades, we'll, we'll be watching traffic, because there's going to be a lot of kids and for the, for the grand march. Nothing out of the ordinary.
Because last year, I recall, some of the businesses downtown participated in that as well. Is that something that's happening again?
We haven't really put anything out too much. The goal kind of was to see if we can keep the kids in town and have dinner downtown and really keep it a hometown feel. It was a huge equity piece last year, because I think a lot of kids came to prom that would not have normally come, had it been out of town. We saw a ton of community members there watching the kids parade around. My plan is for them to go down one side of the street and come back up the other. I've got an amazing photographer that's going to be in the middle of the street somewhere taking pictures. So we, we plan to make it as big of an event as we can, for sure. Mm-hmm, thanks.
These, these are both great events, and they're great for our community. Okay, do we have a motion to?
Just one other, there is still a resident in that block? Have you spoken to that resident?
There is, we have not. I've spoken to Debbie LaRue, who heads up everything there. We didn't have a problem last year at all. He was out of the, out of town, and I don't, I didn't foresee any issues at all. It was pretty seamless last year.
Just asking to make sure that that resident's contacted.
Sure, of course.
And then, with it being after 6:00 PM on a Saturday, that's, that's, that is after CVS closes, we don't have to worry about that.
Correct, yes.
Thank you very much.
Of course, thank you.
Any other questions we need to, want to ask her?
Make sure you come.
In the right motion? We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you very much.
Have fun. I'll try to be there.
Thank you, yes, please do.
All right, now, we have Scott Swindell, who is the NRC Senior Resident Inspector at Callaway, that will speak to us, and we're glad to have you here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Congratulations to those of you that were just elected. My name is Scott Schwend. I'm the Senior Resident Inspector for the Nuclear Regulatory Commission at the Callaway Nuclear Plant. And I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you today. The Nuclear Regulatory Commission strives to be transparent in all our actions, which is why we value interactions such as this with external stakeholders and members of the public. I'm here this evening to first introduce myself to you and our staff, and to give you a brief overview of our role in public health and safety, and finally, to briefly discuss our assessment of the Callaway Plant performance. And joining me tonight, we have Bill Nitco, who is an inspector from our Region Four office in Arlington, Texas, Don Yancy, who is our assistant, admin assistant, and John Vera, who is a visiting inspector from the Wolf Creek Plant in Kansas. Just a little bit about myself, I've been here for about a year now. I moved to Cal, or to Fulton last spring, and I just bought a house here in town. I do have a diverse background, which includes serving in the submarine force of the Nuclear Navy and worked for the Department of Energy in their weapons complex. I also have 10 years plus experience as an NRC inspector. I did grow up in Texas, but I've lived all over the country. But I have to say, this is my first time to live in Missouri, and I kind of like it. So I think Fulton is a great place to live, so I'm very happy to be here. The mission of the Nuclear Regulatory Commission is really to protect the, the health and safety of the public and the environment. And we do this by ensuring the safe use of commercial nuclear technology. As such, we maintain two full-time inspectors at every commercial nuclear power plant in the country. I'm the Senior Inspector at Callaway. Currently, our second inspector position is vacant. We have identified an individual that will be filling that position, and he should be joining us in July. Again, we have a regional office in Arlington, Texas, and our agency headquarters is in Rockville, Maryland. As resident inspectors, we're charged with implementation of the reactor oversight process, which is a very prescriptive inspection program consisting of self-reported performance indicators and approximately 2,000 hours of direct inspections at each nuclear power plant. Those inspections are conducted by me and my colleagues. We inspect safety systems, observe maintenance and testing, evaluate operator training and performance, and radiation protection, among other, other activities. Now, each year, we review the performance indicators and the results of our inspections to form an overall assessment of each nuclear power plant in the country. We use this assessment information to determine how we, as the regulatory agency, will respond to each nuclear power plant. For example, a plant with only a minimum number of inspection findings, and inspection findings deemed to be of very low safety significance, and whose performance indicators are all satisfactory, that plant will receive only the nominal or baseline amount of inspections. However, if a plant has more significant inspection findings or performance indicators that fall out of the norm, they receive additional inspection. And that inspection is focused on the causes and corrective actions for their performance, their degraded performance. Now, having said that, I'd like to say that our review of the Callaway Plant for 2022 indicates that Ameren is safely operating the plant, and that they will receive only the nominal amount of inspections for the current year. I did bring with me some literature that I would be happy to share with you that discusses in detail, in more detail, our role as the regulatory agency at the nuclear power plant, and also a list of links that provide more information on our website. There is a great deal of information on our website, in addition to our mission and activities. You can see the performance indicators that I just mentioned. You can see the results of our inspections, as I mentioned, not just for Callaway, but for all the nuclear plants across the country. And finally, I'd like to, again, thank you for your time and congratulate you all. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council at this time, and also, you know, I will be happy to stay afterward at the meeting if there's any members of the public who would like to ask me questions as well. And I also do have my contact information that I'd like to leave with the council and the mayor. Feel free to contact me anytime if you have questions or concerns. And again, thank you.
Is this the year they have the graded drill?
Yes, as a matter of fact, that's going to be next week, in fact.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, next Tuesday. And for those of you that get involved with emergency preparedness, we, the NRC is, that's very, very important to us, and so you'll probably run across me during a drill or something as well, so, yeah.
Okay, very good. Any other question?
I'd just like to thank you. I appreciate you coming today and, and sharing this with us. Thank you again.
Again, my pleasure, thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I know that you all do a, do a great job out there, and I think Ameren strives for excellence all the time, and I've, I've been out there on many of their drills, and they, they are first class, in my opinion.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to council concerns. Councilman Henchy, you probably don't have anything yet, but if you do, why let us know about it? Okay. Councilman Sebacher, the Park Board?
Yes, I have a Park Board report as well as a couple of concerns. Excuse me. So I actually was unable to attend the last Park Board meeting, which took place on April the 6th. I was out of town for business, and I did get the minutes. Clay is going to touch on a few things from the minutes, but I did just want to talk about the membership, the Q1 report. Year over year, everything is up, which I think is absolutely phenomenal. It's, it's an incredible achievement for them. Q1 of '22 memberships were at 509, Q1 of '23 at 723, so it's a 42% increase. Membership by person, by member is up 23%. So they're, they're doing really great things out there, and I think that the longer we get into this and the longer people have an opportunity to learn about the REC Plex and what it's doing, I think it's having a really positive benefit. So I just wanted to congratulate Clay on that and make sure that, that people knew it was, it was growing.
Thank you. Clay Caswell, Director of Parks and Recreation. Just to highlight on the, on the report that Valerie was talking about, a few more things. One big number on there was the facility rentals are up 111% from this time last year. So that's, that's huge, almost, big, big numbers. And the other thing that I really watch is the revenue and expense. Revenue is up 28%, expenses are down 12%. So very pleased with that, we got to keep that going. I think everything's trending in, in the right direction with that. So that was part of the report that we, we provided to the Park Board. Some of the other things that we talked about at the Park Board meeting, in, in the old business, there's been an ongoing discussion about the feasibility of having a disc golf course out of Tennyson Road Park. Local disc golf group has kind of talked about maybe donating, you know, doing some fundraising and donating to that cause. So I kind of provided them with a cost estimate, what that project would look like, just so we can keep it, keep talking about it. The other thing we talked about is the golf cart paths out of Tangawood. Engineering has been out to the golf course, they've analyzed the entire five miles of path. They've rated the path, the different areas of the path, from worst, I guess, to, to best. And then we've also collected a few proposals, one from a local company and one from a nationwide company, to kind of get some cost estimates on what it would do, what it would take to, to repair the path. And then engineering is also working on some other options that might be a little more affordable. So that, that planned project is still in the process, but engineering is working pretty hard on that. The last thing we, last major thing we talked about was a topic that Councilman Stone mentioned at the last meeting, which was a fence down by the splash pad, between the splash pad and Second Street. I gave the board some cost estimates, I gave them some different ideas, kind of, we could do chain link, we could do chain fence, we could do metal panels, we talked about maybe doing some boulders as a, as a blockade. So we talked about different options. The board is really kind of, you know, all over the place with what they thought. Some thought we needed it, some thought we didn't need it. I think in the end, what we decided to do is just have our Parks and Rec staff observe the area, especially when the new Justice Center opens, kind of see what the traffic is. If, if we need to go to the Engineering Department and do a traffic study, we can talk about that. So I think what we're going to do is kind of watch it over the next couple of months, when the splash pad opens and when the Justice Center opens, and see if there's any safety concerns.
Did you do a, have we done a formal bid on the golf cart, or just we talked to companies?
We have not. We're just kind of, kind of informal proposals, had people out looking at it, kind of give us a cost estimate, and just so we know where to start.
Okay. Do we have any, do you have anything to add there?
Thank you, Mayor. So one of, one of the things that we're doing, they are collecting external cost, and what we have been discussing internally is formulating contrast, to see what it would cost to do it internally. The other part of the conversation, because Clay didn't mention it, one of the bids was a million dollars. That was an external bid, the second bid. The second bid was $600,000. And either way, if we do external, we're probably looking at breaking it up. So with engineering grading the cart path, the idea would be to attack the worst parts first and progress in that manner. So once Kyle and his staff formulate the internal proposed cost, we can then have another discussion with council, present all the options. And this is something we would look at starting in the 2024, you know, so we're right in the right time, because we're getting ready to start our budget process. This would be a possible capital improvement, and it would be more feasible right now. I feel it would be more feasible if we break it into threes or so. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Any other questions?
You ready for my concerns?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I kind of did that backwards. I'm just trying to, I'm testing you on your first night. Okay, so earlier this week, the council received notification that a, an email address for each of us individually had been set up for preservation of record-keeping and sunshine law requests and things of that nature. And I just wanted to make a recommendation to not only have the city listed email on our business cards and our contact information, but also our private email as well, so that constituents feel comfortable contacting us privately without the, the worry of that going directly to the city. Oftentimes, they contact us, you know, confidentially and expect us to take care of their problems for them. So it's just a suggestion. I think it would be a good idea. And then my other comment, not concern, was just a thank you to our solid waste department. Spring cleanup week is hard on these folks, and I had Clint, actually, came by my house this morning, and when he dumped our roll cart, it spilled, and he got out of his truck, went around and cleaned it up, put it back in the roll cart, got back in the truck and dumped it again. And that's just one time that they do this, and it's just awesome to see how much they love what they do and how well they take care of us. So I wanted to thank them and let them know that it didn't go unnoticed, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Reclu, traffic commission?
A council meeting in the, in the last month or so. I don't really have an awful lot of concerns right now. I'm kind of in limbo. Kyle, I thought perhaps you may have something you'd like to share. Karen's our city, a city engineer.
Kyle. Kyle and I go back a long way. He's always got something to say.
Kyle Brimmer, city engineer. Right now, you know, we obviously have the Second Street Bridge that's out of commission, and we're over a third of the way through with that project. So obviously, folks in, in town and, and visitors out of town are dealing with that obstacle. Later this year, we will, we will have a section of Business 54 that we will be working on. It will not involve a, a all-out closure like Second Street, but we'll be adding sidewalks and a, and a turn lane from Westminster to Collier down on Business 54. So that's our, that's our main, main obstructions that are going to happen this year, and they're, they're obviously on, on our two most driven roadways in town, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Kyle.
Mayor, do you have anything else? Okay. Next, Councilman Stone, historic preservation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we've not had a Historic Preservation Commission meeting since the last one. And then just concerns, I want to echo the thank you to the, to the solid waste department this week. And we know that there are additional people within the city family that help out with all of that. So everybody that's, that's contributing to, to the spring cleanup. And then I want to thank Director Brimmer for keeping me up to date on the, the progress, or at least the communication that's going on with the, the Second Street wall there by West Lakes. It, it, communication still continues. And then that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, you are.
Apologies.
That is a monumental task every year for this week long, and I see a lot of the city employees that normally work many other areas in our city chipping in to help pick up, and fortunately, probably a third of it's already picked up by the time they get there, so that's good, that's good too.
I did have one other item. I appreciate the park board having the full discussion of, of some sort of, of subtle barrier at Second Street and Memorial Park. I, I truly wish for that conversation to continue with that park board. I believe we need something there. It doesn't have to be obtrusive. It doesn't need to be a wall. It doesn't need to be chain link, but it needs to be something that is at least a visual, you know, deterrent, slowdown, something of, of the children that we have, or just anybody that we have there at Memorial Park to keep them off of Second Street.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Councilman Luther?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There has been no airport advisory board meeting since our last council meeting. I have no concerns this time. I do have appreciation for our fire department and our county ambulance district. Unfortunately, Friday last week, I was involved in a tree-cutting injury where I had to utilize their services. Unfortunately, I did not get their names as I was, not really looking for that at the time, but I do sincerely appreciate the support I got in a time of distress, and very much appreciate it when you have to rely on that, those services yourself. So thank you very much for all that support on Friday.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Combs, Human Rights Commission?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Human Rights Commission has not met since our last meeting, and I have no concerns tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No concerns at this time.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Nelson, Public Utilities Board?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There has not been a Public Utility Board meeting since our last council meeting. When is the next one scheduled, Daryl? Before, before the next council meeting, we will have an update. And I don't have any concerns, but I agree with Valerie and Jeff on our, our city employees in this week. I also want to note that even when you think that they're having a bad day, they always still wave. You know, no matter what they're doing, they're always very kind, and they always wave, as I wave at them every time. So I'm like, hey, guys, I really appreciate you, and they always wave back.
Very good. Thank you. I don't have any concerns tonight as well. I just certainly thank everyone again. It's been fun, it's, the last week has been very humbling with the number of calls and texts and emails I've gotten. It's just been, been great, but again, I want to thank everyone. Now we'll move on to resolutions. Councilman Combs, you want to read Resolution 3484?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3484. Whereas Lau Canal has effectively, professionally, and faithfully served the City of Fulton, Missouri as councilman for eight years and as mayor for four years, commencing April 9th, 2019, and ending April 11th, 2023. And whereas Lau has demonstrated his profound and sincere respect for our city by faithfully carrying out his duties and obligations, as well as by his devotion to the betterment of Fulton, proudly providing the commitment to bringing people together to build a better quality of life for all citizens, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Fulton, Missouri as follows. That the mayor and the city council of Fulton, Missouri, on behalf of the citizens of the city, desire to convey an expression of our sincere gratitude and appreciation for your faithful and valuable service rendered by this community. I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3484 at this council meeting.
Second.
Very good. Thank you. Motion's been, no more. Motion's been made and seconded that we accept Resolution 3484. The appreciation of Mayor Canton. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Hardware. Present it to the mayor.
Thank you very much, sir, for your, for your service to the state, and...
It'd be weird not calling each chief.
Councilman Luther, would you read Resolution 3485 for us, please?
With honor, sir. Resolution 3485, in appreciation of Mike West. Whereas Mike, Michael Mike West has sincerely and conscientiously served the City of Fulton, Missouri, as city councilman of the First Ward, most recently from April 13th, 2021 to April 11th, 2023. And whereas Mike has conducted himself in the office of councilman with considerable thought for the desires and well-being of his constituents throughout the combined 16 years of service. Whereas Mike's service to the City of Fulton and devotion to local government are notable and deserve to be recognized, and now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Fulton, Missouri as follows. That the mayor and city council of the City of Fulton, Missouri, on behalf of the citizens of the city, desire to convey an expression of our sincere gratitude and appreciation for your faithful and valuable service rendered to this community. I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3485 at this council meeting.
Thank you, Council.
Mr. West?
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, you know I can't leave just without saying a few things, so, first of all, I'd like to thank the voters for their support of me in the, in the past, over the years, for council and for my elections, or my runs as mayor. I'd like to thank this council and past councils. This is a great council. I've enjoyed working with all of you the last two years, and some of you longer than that in, in, in previous times on the council. I'd like to thank the staff, the city staff, the department heads, and I also still like to offer, if, as a citizen now, that I would still love to help with a strategic plan or anything else that might, might happen. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Councilman Washington, would you read Resolution 3486 for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 3486, Visual Sewer Contract Renewal. A resolution authorizing the mayor on the behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary document, document in relations to the third renewal, to a third renewal of contract with the visual sewer of M O L L C for sewer evaluation and rehabilitation services and establish an effective date. I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3486 at this council meeting tonight.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded that we adopt Resolution 3486 at the night's meeting. Do you have any discussion? Director Tyler, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a yearly contract, so we are just asking that the council authorize the allocation of funds for Visu Sewer of Missouri LLC.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Hearing no discussion, we'll have a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries and passes. Councilwoman Nelson, do you want to read Resolution 3487 for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3487, Emergency Leachate Disposal MOU. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to issue a memorandum of understanding with Republic Services, RSG, for the purpose of temporary emergency dispels of Jefferson City landfill leachate at the City of Fulton wastewater treatment plant in the event of an emergency disruption in which the City of Jefferson is unable to receive Jefferson City landfill leachate and establishing an effective date. I make a motion, we pass Resolution Number 3487 at tonight's council meeting.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Director, you want to explain this to us?
This is not a, a new agreement. However, this is the first time that we have actually enacted a memorandum of understanding with Republic Services. I was, they reached out to me via email, and I asked for the memorandum of understanding, and they explained that there was none. So this is basically to predict, protect both parties involved.
Thank you. All right, is, anyone have any further questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Lawrence, Lawrence, Councilman Nelson getting two in a row here. Would you read 3488 for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3488, Williams Keepers Financial Statement and MIRMA Audit. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with Williams Keepers LLC of Columbia, Missouri, to provide a financial statement audit, MIRMA audit, and related services. Make a motion, we pass Resolution Number 3488 at tonight's council meeting.
Thank you. I, what was, this was not put out for bid, if I'm correct in saying that this year, Director?
That is correct, Mayor. This will be the last year that we conduct the audit in this manner. Effective, probably within the next 90 days, we will be going out to bid for our 20, for our auditor, for 2024 to audit 2023. So this resolution just authorizes us to embark into our annual audit.
Yeah, and I, and I say that knowing that it wasn't, and that, but in the future, we're going to be bidding that contract out, which it should be, certainly. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Councilman Seibacher, you want to read Resolution, what, 3489?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 3489, excuse me. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to the purchase of a VAC truck. Make a motion to place, excuse me, to adopt Resolution 3489 at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
Second.
And pause for just a moment.
Counsel, give me one moment.
Madam Clerk, was that memo sent out digitally to everyone earlier today? Is that correct?
That's correct. I have it with me if anybody needs it.
I need it.
Sure.
I don't have my phone, so I need it. I apologize. Thank you. All right.
Okay, I... Did we have a second to that?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Now, Director.
I apologize. I don't have my phone up here, so I didn't realize it had been sent out digitally. The last resolution is actually asking us to provide funds from our sewer tax, which the correct... Is our capital improvement sales tax special revenue fund, to purchase a new but demoed VAC truck. And what we would like to do is keep the current VAC truck that we have, repair it for approximately $35,000. We will then have two VAC trucks, because oftentimes, and I'm sure many of you are aware, because constituents call, if one VAC truck is being used and we have an emergency or second situation at another part of town, we do not have the ability to tend to that. And there's often a wait, or we end up having to rent a truck. So in the long run, the projection is that this would save us money and allow us to provide more efficient services. And our utility superintendent is standing here, and I'm sure Mr. Dunlap can add some more to this statement.
Darrell Dunlap, Fulton Utilities. And the last VAC truck we bought was in 2008, and the body has several holes in it now. I guess the best way to say is we've got a suck truck that don't suck very good right now. And when we looked at getting it repaired, we spent about $35,000 on it in 2018. We're looking at spending another $25,000 to $50,000 on it now. And when Councilwoman Nelson went around with me about a month ago, this is one of the things that we looked at, and we did find a demo truck. It's the same manufacturer that made our current truck. The price is about $481,109 is what it is. We could have it here approximately August, September. It is a Sourcewell contract, and we did have purchasing go verify that the truck and the Vector body is on Sourcewell, which Jason Harris did confirm that today. We got another price from another vendor for $531,656, and then estimated on another truck for $575. We have done the demo trucks before in other parts of the utility. We've had good luck with them. This would be a 2023 truck, and all the specs, they're all 12-yard trucks. So after going and talking to Darren Elzenrath at the shop, you know, he feels that if he could have the truck, because right now, it's the only truck we got. So he's basically been band-aiding it, so it could go back out on the road if somebody's basement backed up. He feels if he could have the truck for an extended period of time and work it in and repair that body, he thinks that he can make a good secondary truck out of it. So that's the direction we would like to go. They only offered us roughly $30,000 for the trade-in of the truck, and we just feel that truck's worth a lot more than that if we can get it through the city shop and fix most of its problems. So that's kind of where we're at.
Darrell, on those other quotes, were those for new trucks?
The 531 was for a demo truck. That wouldn't be here till possibly the first year or end of this year. The other truck is not built, so that's why that 575 is an estimate.
And can you tell us how long it would take to actually, if we were to wait to get a new truck, how long is the amount of months it would take to get that?
We didn't get a delivery time on that, and we talked to some other cities. I saw Sykeson a couple of months ago, and I knew they got a new truck, and I'm like, how did you guys get a new truck so fast? We bought a demo. So that seems to be...
Like whenever we had talked to Anna, she had said like 18 to 24 months.
Yeah. It's a long time. I don't think it's as bad as a fire truck.
Right.
But it's still pretty bad. So that appears to be with these times. That's how most cities are going, is if you can find a demo truck, get it if it meets your specs. And so that's kind of where we ended up, was we have the money, as the D O A said, so we can go ahead and get this truck and then keep the other truck as a good backup truck.
And what's the delivery on this demo truck?
They're saying August. I'm going to say September.
Okay. And so we do not currently have a functioning?
We have a functioning. It is got some severe leaks, and we're hoping, working with the factory, they've gave it us some guidance. I mean, Darren may have to refix some spots. I mean, you may see... Hate to say it, but you may see a stop sign pop riveted to a spot right now, just to keep it functioning. But that's kind of where we're at. We'll paint the stop sign white or something, you know, but...
But we're looking to spend the $55,000 to repair it, as well as the $481,000 to purchase the new demo.
We don't think it'll take that much. We're going to run it through the shop with time. And right now, we're lucky enough that we do have some inmates that are very skilled welders and stuff. They have already fixed... I don't know how many dumpsters they've already fixed. They've already repaired a whole bunch of dumpsters. So that would probably be most of our workforce. We'd be using the inmate help to fix a bunch of this tank problem.
Darrell, can you tell us, since 2008, how many times we've had to rent a truck when ours has gone down?
We've had to rent a truck out of Jeff City several times. That's been our main guy. And I'd say probably... I wish Anna was here to answer that exactly, but a couple of times a year, you know, we've had issues and had to rent a truck.
Would this demo truck have any kind of warranty or any kind of service?
Yes, it does. It does have warranty on a full warranty. And our mechanics have been to that school there. And unfortunately, our truck was fairly old when they went to that school, so they actually learned how to work on the new trucks, not the one we had. But yes, there is a full warranty on the truck.
And that comes with the purchase price that we're talking about? It's not in addition to? How long does that last?
I'd have to look again.
Okay.
We was trying to find some comparable prices, and we was trying to make sure that it was on Sourcewell, which is a group buying. Ms. Tyler knows more about Sourcewell than I do, but it's basically a group buying, kind of like buying on state contract. Remember that, where they do group purchasing and real discounts? And the discount through Sourcewell on this truck, it looks like it's $28,000 is the discount.
Darrell, when we have to rent a vehicle or rent one of those trucks, how long do we keep them?
If we have an emergency out of Jeff City, they send a driver with it, and it's just rented for that episode, that time.
And what is the cost on that?
If we have to... If we send our truck to Illinois to be fixed, if I remember correctly, and it's been a little while since we've done it, I think it was like $15,000 a month for the rent while our truck was in the shop.
So then, I guess, speaking of that, have we looked at the cost of just rent a truck for a month or two, fix the one we got? I'm just concerned that, I mean, this just seems like it was all of a sudden, hey, let's spend $500,000. We talked about a truck, and I understand we need it. How much will $500,000 fix our sewers to help mitigate some of these backups? I mean, I know we want fire trucks. We want a lot of things. It's just, you know, is there more time needed to make sure this is the right place to spend the money at the right time versus renting a truck for a month, getting the other one really going good until we can really just take a step back and...
I don't know if we'll get the other one going really good. We can make it suck and use it as an emergency truck. It is a 2008. At that time, I think we gave like $230,000 for that truck back then. And the only thing I would point out to the council is this is the only sewer truck we have. So if there's a backup or whatever, this is the only truck we have.
Okay, any further discussion? Thanks, Darrell.
Are there any projects that we're going to need to delay this year in order to reallocate these, or not reallocate, but to allocate these emergency funds?
No, this is coming from the sales tax money that hasn't been spent. It is listed in the budget, but it does not impede any projects that we have planned.
You're welcome. Can you give kind of an idea of other uses for that tax money, just so we kind of have an idea of where the other places are we could spend that?
Certainly. Sewer repair, I think this is what Councilman Luther was alluding to. Gutters, stormwater issues. But keep in mind, when you're... When we are using something that is dedicated to the removal of sewage and sludge, these are ongoing daily occurrences, whether it's with our industrial customers or residential customers. And we... If we don't have that type of apparatus, we run the risk of really going down a bad rabbit hole financially. So while it is an expensive piece of equipment, quite honestly, I've seen them, because I did run sewer when I was in Dubuque, I've seen them $600-plus thousand. So he's done a really good job as far as sourcing and getting an excellent price.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at? Do we have to make this decision today, or can we take a little more time to talk about it?
Counsel can take their time. What ends up happening is, A, we have the possibility of losing the demo, and it basically pushes it further down the road. And that's why it was labeled as an emergency expense. The quicker we get on it, the faster we will receive it. Hopefully, and again, the council can do what it feels it needs to do. If we do delay it, we could possibly lose this particular demo, because someone else will secure it. And then basically, the utilities department will be back at square one, possibly trying to source something to get it here before fall.
Okay, thank you.
My opinion, I think we need to move on this tonight because, and I have talked to Darrell a little bit about this, we could lose the demo, and it's going to cost us a lot more. And then our old truck's not going to get any better. So we're going to have to bite the bullet eventually. So I think we need to go ahead and move on this tonight.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I know we have a motion by Ms. Seibacher. Who was the person who seconded it?
I did.
Thank you, Mr. Stone.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Why don't we do a... A voice count, please. Ahead count, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, one second. Mr. Luther? Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
No.
Ms. Seibacher?
No.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Henchy?
Yes.
With five council votes on affirmative and three opposed.
Very good. Motion passes. Okay, we have announcements. We have no ordinances tonight. We have announcements. Next council meeting is going to be April the 25th at 6:30. We have spring cleanup week this week. I know there's tons and tons of trash, literally, that our people have been picking up. I know that's a tough job for them. Second Annual Clean Sweep will be Saturday, April 15. You need to register for that at Parks and Rec's play someplace. May is Historic Preservation Month. If your home or business is more than 50 years old, you can request an application to be recognized as a historical designated property. For more information, you can contact the Historical Society. I know we've got about 50, I think, signs they typically put out. I know that's a lot of work to have volunteers put those out. I'm not sure how...
Mr. Mayor, yes.
How long they leave those out?
The entire month of May.
Okay.
Any property within the city limits, and if you're outside the city limits, you can also ask for it. But if your property, whether it's commercial or residential, is 50 years old or older, then we have signs available to designate your property as a historical property. It's not about being on a register, any of that. It's just recognizing the, you know, the efforts and the money and the upkeep and just the pride and appreciation that we have in this town for our properties that are greater than 50 years old. And we're willing to make as many signs as we need to. So there's no limit. Please call.
Very good. Thank you. Director, do you have anything else you want to...
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Seeing nothing else, I will entertain, and we don't need an executive session tonight, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?